Trainings, Rita's gonna walk us through the PowerPoint that Michael Casserly and A.J. Craybill brought to us before the time when Michelle, Andrew and I were on the board. This really is an outgrowth of the work that we've done through the Harvard Institute and through the Council of Great City Schools and our work with A.J. I just wanna, if anyone's watching, wanna be clear that what we're evaluating ourselves on as a board is how we function as a board relating to our four board goals and that are all student outcome focused. And those four goals are around third grade reading, fifth grade math, high school readiness, and post-secondary readiness. So when we're looking at things like monitoring and accountability, we're looking at specifically what the board's role is in accountability and monitoring of the goals and the goal outcomes, not the other accountability and monitoring functions we have as a board. I also did just wanna remind everybody that our board goals are grounded in our vision, the PPS Vision, PPS Reimagine. And I thought it was really helpful for me to review what our graduate portrait was, those nine traits of a graduate that we really wanna think about as what a product of the Portland Public School System looked like. So graduate, this is the, these are the nine areas. Graduates are inclusive collaborative problem solvers, inquisitive critical thinkers with deep core knowledge, transformative racial equity leaders, resilient and adaptable lifelong learners, powerful and effective communicators, positive confident and connected sons of self, which is the only one that doesn't have like a noun at the end, which is weird, or like a descriptor, anyway, influential and informed global stewards, reflective empathetic and empowered graduates, and optimistic future oriented graduates. Um, so you know, we had, I think, Michelle, I remember at the end of our session that we had a couple of weeks ago around our racial equity feeling work that you had highlighted, again, the need for a self-evaluation, and I know Amy has talked about it, and Rita and Scott, and that this is something we've all been saying, like, how do we function better? How do we do this work more efficiently, more collaboratively? And so the idea was to really spend this year doing some of the stuff we've talked about from our learnings at Harvard, the way, the best practices from OSBA. And so I, you know, I don't think any one of us actually has the capacity to do all the things. And so I knew as board chair that I didn't have the ability to take on this role. And so this was something Rita was really passionate about, this idea of how do we work together to become a more effective board? And so I asked her to kind of take the lead on this because I knew that, like, today has been one of those crazy insane church days when like, nothing went right, and I feel really inadequate and kind of crappy. And so I'm really glad that I can turn over some of this to Rita to be like, okay, I don't have to do it all, there are other people who have skills and investment and passion around this. So that's why Rita's gonna be leading us today and leading us through some of this board development work because, you know, it's a, it's a big lift, the things we have to do, and so we all need to do our pieces. The other part is that Rita is retired and basically, you know, has nothing but time on her hands. So we've gotta give her a project to keep her out of trouble. So she's gonna kind of lead us through this instrument and kind of how the conversation is gonna go. We are gonna stop at seven, just to honor everyone's time, and know that this is part of an ongoing conversation. So we don't have to get it all out tonight, but it gives us a chance to like, begin some of this self-evaluation work and board improvement. And with that, I will let Rita take it away.
Just real quick, do we have breaks scheduled? You know, the two-minute stand-up and walk-around in 45 minutes, kind of a break?
Yes.
Well, we, we don't have a formal time set up for breaks, but I've asked Ailee to kinda be a timekeeper. And as we get to kind of natural transition points, if, if you could remind us to take a little break. But I wanna keep it a little fluid to see how, you know, so that we're not interrupting in the middle of a sentence.
I, I appreciate that, but I also, Ben and, you know, the last time we've gathered like this, we didn't get a break, and I, I think it's important to honor stretch breaks. If you can set a timer, or I'm happy to be a timekeeper, I won't interrupt anybody in the middle of a sentence, I promise, or an idea. We have all the technology here to set, settle, a timer for 45 minutes.
Okay.
Would that be okay with everyone?
I mean, yeah, let's say roughly in 45, every 45 minutes, we'll have a break. That sounds okay?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be militaristic.
More or less.
It doesn't need to be, yes, thank you.
Okay.
So one thing also, I have a, I do have a hard stop at seven, so I would ask that we, as we get closer to the seven o'clock hour, start landing the plane, if we're still flying.
I do too.
Okay.
I have a hard stop at six, and I'm giving you all an extra hour.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Okay, and, and I don't think that, anybody who's tuning in heard this, Andrew Scott is, is gonna be joining us in a few minutes, he got hung up at work, so he should be joining us shortly. But he asked us not to wait on him, so. So I think what we're, I think the point of today is to, to come to a sort of, this is an opportunity for all of us in the board to kind of calibrate where we think we are individually and collectively in terms of how we're, Andrew, we just started, so you haven't missed.
Perfect timing.
Okay, sorry, I was late.
Except if, if you wanna negotiate different breaks, it's too late.
Yeah, and you missed my amazing introduction, so just be sad.
Okay, I'll go back and watch the video.
Okay. So, so I think this is a, an opportunity for us to do some self-reflection, and it's something that those of us who've been on the board since 2017 have talked about pretty regularly, that this is something we ought to do, but we have not done it. And I am not aware of any previous PPS school boards going through a real self-evaluation either. So this is going to be, we're gonna be piloting this thing, and it's, it may feel a little awkward, it's a brand-new instrument, and I, I think one of the things that we can do tonight, keep in mind as we're walking through it, is this instrument getting us the information that we wanna have, and, and should we continue to use it going forward? So that's gonna be one of the things that I will ask as we approach the end of, of today's meeting. But it's an opportunity to kind of do some self-assessments, and what's working, what's not working as well as we would like it to, what would we, what do we wanna improve on, and ultimately, like, what do we want to, how do we as a board define high functioning? You know, what would success look like if, if we could address some of the, some of the things that are not working as well as we would like? And then ultimately, by the end of tonight, I think it would be helpful if we could identify some next steps. So I'm hoping that we'll have roughly half an hour at the end to, to kind of work through what you thought of the instrument and ideas that have come up over the course of the discussion that we'd like to pursue, and what we wanna focus on in terms of board development for this school year. So to start us off, I wanted to, I wanted to try to put on the screen the PowerPoint that those of us who were here in the spring of 2019 went through with Mike Casserly and A.J. Craybill. It's their, their kind of introductory PowerPoint on the evidence base for the Council of Great City Schools governance model for school boards. And there, some of us already seen this, for some of you, it's gonna be new, but I'm hoping it won't be completely unfamiliar because it's kind of the basis for the training that we've had so far. So even if you haven't seen the actual PowerPoint, it, it should be, it should be relatively comfortable for you, I think. Okay, so I have not done a presentation using Google before, so bear with me, I'm gonna try to make this work.
So while you're trying to make that work, I'm just gonna apologize for, in the meaning, if it looks like I'm not looking directly at my screen at all of you, it's because I don't have any ability to print anything out, so I'm having to look at the documents on another computer. So it's not that I'm not paying attention.
Okay. All right, so.
No paper, Amy.
Can you see that?
No.
Uh, okay.
You see the button on, on the bottom left that says Print Now?
Right, that's what I did. And it's not, hang on. All right, let me back out, start over again.
That's good, we're, we're modeling good learning organization behavior right now, so when you figure it out, maybe you can share it with us.
I keep clicking on the share button and nothing's happening. Come on.
Rita, I think you're referring to the same document that you emailed us, so we can look at it from our email.
I am. Okay, this is, this is not working, so, okay, so.
Somebody else wanna just put it up?
Can anybody do it? It's not letting me do it.
Somebody trying?
How's that? Did that work? Did that work?
That worked.
Oh, okay. All right, it's finicky.
Well, now I think Michelle is actually presenting.
Okay.
She's been talking the whole time and no one can hear me. So, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I wanted to, let me see if, okay, do you have, I just switched to a slide that says conclusions based on, have you seen that?
It's small, but we can see it.
We can see that, it's, it's, it looks like the frames.
All, all you have to do is put, touch, you guys hit the pen and it will make it the, the screen. See if you, see the, if you see the little pin on your, on that, that slide, hit the pen and it should make it your whole screen.
How's that?
That worked, that worked for me.
Okay. All right, so.
So Roseanne just helped us out, thank you.
Okay, so I don't know whose screen you're seeing.
Thanks for being here.
Okay, so this is, I'm gonna blow through some of these slides and just focus on a, like, four that I think are actually relevant to what we're doing tonight. And it's just worth noting, this is, this is the background that went into their, this is the evidence that they're using for their, for their model and for all of the training and coaching that they do. And this one, I'm sharing this through a Chromebook, and it's a, it's a PowerPoint, so some of the things didn't translate. The next few slides are just showing where different school districts show up on, like, quantitative data for student outcomes.
And we're not on this, are we? No.
No, we're not on. But the, the details are less important than the, the concept that there, wide variation in the student outcomes across different districts. Okay, so, the things that, based on the research that they've done, the council has decided that there are certain characteristics for districts and boards that are associated with better student outcomes. And I'm gonna read it in case people can't see it on their screens. So leadership and governance, goals, accountability, tiered strategy, district, school and groups, instructional program, capacity building, and data. So those are the components of, that they think are associated with higher performing school, that school districts. Leadership and governance. Are people able to see this screen and read it?
Yes, yes, we can, it's got the bullet points there, it starts with leadership and governance, governance ends with data.
Director Moore, Roseanne, Roseanne says that when you're ready to move forward, if you'll just let her know so she can move to the next slide.
So, so whose screen is, are, is, who's screen are people seeing, mine or Roseanne's?
They're seeing Roseanne's.
Okay, all right, so. Okay, so Roseanne, I think I'm on, I'm looking at page, slide seven, I think.
It's the next slide, Roseanne. There we go.
All right, so let me, okay. So if, if everything can read this, I don't think I need to, to read off the bullet point. But essentially, I think the, the point is that leadership and governance, the school board has a role, the superintendent has a role, both, both of those, both the board and the superintendent and his staff need to understand what the role is, what each, each, each other's role is. And I think the, the main takeaway here is that we're supposed to be working in concert and trying to keep the main thing the main thing. If we're really focused on student outcomes, then everything that the board does and the superintendent staff do should be kind of specifically designed to advance the cause of improving student outcomes. And, and I think what we're trying to achieve is consistency and predictability in approach and in focus. Roseanne, next slide? Oh, we got it, okay. So, sorry, so the goals, and we, we did an exercise last year where we came up with the, the four goals for both the board and the district that were specifically focused on student outcomes, and, and provided kind of interim measures, there, there are three to five-year goals with interim measures, quantifiable interim measures that, that will allow us to hold ourselves accountable, hold the district accountable, allow the community to hold all of us accountable, and, and allow us to see how we're making progress or not, and then make any course corrections that might be necessary. Okay, next slide? So one of the, there are a number of ways that the, the board, the superintendent, and the district should be held accountable. And I think PPS is, is really kind of on the early, in the early stages of creating and maintaining accountability structures and mechanisms that, that will allow us to measure progress and identify places where we need to change the way we're doing things, and allow us to focus in particular on, I mean, the goals that we have chosen, very explicitly focused on student groups that have been historically underserved. And, and that ties in with a theory of action where if we can make progress in the outcomes for those student groups, the theory is that we should be also making progress in outcomes for all other student groups. But the reverse is not necessarily the case. If we just take aggregate numbers, it, we can be, the, the measures that we use could be indicating progress, but the progress may be because of the, because the demographics may be skewing the results to, to make improvements appear larger than they are. So the, for example, middle-class white students could be making great progress, but we may still be leaving behind students who are students of color, students living in poverty, students with special needs. So we're making an attempt to disaggregate all of the information that we're using and, and using the data to establish common goals and, and monitoring systems to, to make sure that we're actually pursuing goals. Okay, next slide?
Rita, I have a question. So I know this is a data-driven process, and you just talked about disaggregating data to get a finer point on, on, on where we, where we actually are. Do we have outcome, do we have outcomes data, particularly with students of color? What you said about the demographic, the mix of who, who we're, who we're talking about may skew one or the other, might skew higher by the presence of white middle-class students, but what, what are we looking at in terms of outcomes? You know, does the Council for Great City Schools have any examples of school districts that have adopted these practices where the black and brown students have, have actually improved?
Yes. Yeah.
There's cities that we can look to, to, to find that data, or are there links, or?
Well, so what we're going to.
It's not just, it's not just the urban school district, there's a lot of other, there, there's other information that feeds into these, these statistics. I just, I'd be interested in being pointed to some studies that, that show positive outcomes for students of color.
So if, if you look at the, the packet that, that I sent, that Student Outcomes Focused Governance, the Continuing, Continuous Improvement Framework that, that we used for the, for the self-assessment, at the back of it is a fairly extensive bibliography that you can, you can look at with, that has the, provides a lot of the evidence base for the, for what I'm going through right now. I mean, this, this part is, the, this is coming from the council. So these are the components that the council has determined are, are correlated with student improvement. Okay? So these are kind of broad general statements about if, if you want to see improvements in student outcomes, these are the elements of an improvement plan that is associated with the outcomes that people want.
Right, I'm just.
Does that make sense?
It does, and I did find the bibliography, thank you. But if that data is not, it disaggregated by race, then, then we don't know, as you just mentioned, whether the, the data is skewing, you know, or over to the right, if, if we're getting improvements for white middle-class kids and not everybody else. So, so that's what I was wondering, I, I haven't looked into this bibliography, and I probably won't for a few days. I'm curious, anyway, it's just a question I have, and it'll be an ongoing question.
Okay.
And I'll dive into the bibliography when we're off the call.
Okay, I think what you're gonna find is that the districts that have actually made the most progress are precisely the ones that disaggregate.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that they focus on, they focus on the student groups that have historically been underserved and underperforming, under, quote-unquote, underperform. Okay, so, so the tiered strategy, this is mostly about what the district does in terms of how it kind of tiers out the work on a day-to-day basis. Next slide? And this is all of the info around the instructional program. Again, this is primarily the district work. Next slide? Building capacity, this, in PPS, this is a very big item because there was very little central office capacity to do most of the work that is associated with improvement. Next slide? Data, next slide? I just wanna focus on a couple of the slides that, that really focus on the board stuff. So all of these, all of these components are part of a, they have to fit together to have a, a district that is kind of fully aligned and has the, has the wherewithal to make the improvements that people want. And in particular, the board and the district need to be working in tandem. Next slide? So these are the things that, these are the kind of tasks that the council is saying the boards should focus on. Vision, goals, representation of the larger community in terms of values and priorities, making sure it hires the, the right superintendent, setting a culture and clear expectation, the board prioritizing what, you know, where the focus ought to be, and making sure that everybody understands what those priorities are, focusing its own work on those priorities, making sure that we're creating sustainability. work on those priorities, um, making sure that we're creating, um, sustainability in the, the, the priorities that we have, the goals, all of it. Um, and then making sure that we have a monitoring process to keep both us and the administration focused on student outcomes. Okay. Next slide. I think that's it. Okay. All right. I, I just thought it was worth spending a few minutes going through that slide, um, as, to, to kind of ground the discussion that we're going to have for the rest of it, because the instrument that we used is directly coming out of that governance model that the council promotes. So, um-
Hey Rita, can I say-
I wanted to-
Rita? Can I say something for a second about instrument? I mean, I, I personally would like to think of this exercise as sort of our first opportunity to reflect on, um, how we want to hold ourselves accountable going forward. Um, I think it was not very useful to, to rate ourselves or to go through this exercise with this instrument, because this instrument is intended for boards that have, um, discussed it at the outset, that these were going to be the goals, and then structured meetings and structured governance according to the very explicit criteria that it lea- that it puts forward, most of which weren't really applicable to us, because we hadn't, um, we hadn't used it as our, our guiding path before. So, um, I would just like, like to put in a plug for determining whether we want to use this framework going forward, in which case we really will need to change how we structure our meetings. And, um, then just generally talk about the values in each of them, and, and I would caution against putting too much weight on, um, our performance relative to the criteria, because that doesn't, doesn't really make sense.
I, I agree. I think, I think this is great. The reflective, um, self-reflection is excellent, but when I was looking through this, it made me realize that we didn't have, we hadn't established a baseline measurement from which to sort of evaluate on, and so, um, I, I was hoping tonight that we would kind of establish that baseline and set some goals around some of the criteria that appeared in that, in that, um, evaluative tool.
So-
I would just, we're sorry Rita, before, I would just jump in to say, I found it useful, because it showed me how, how far away we are from this, and so I agree, I mean, we didn't talk about it, we didn't structure it, so we shouldn't expect to have done well. Um, I thought it was interesting, Michelle, you and I have exactly the same scores, which I thought was interesting, and they're, they're both very low. Um, but, but what I found most, most helpful, at least for me as a starting point for this conversation, was, okay, so this is what the Council's Great City Schools is saying an effective board should be, and this is how far away we are from that, which to me makes a really, hopefully, really robust conversation tonight about, do we want to be there, or do we want to make some changes to what they think? And, and to the extent we are going to deviate, let's be really explicit about it, about why we're deviating and, and what that means.
Andrew, I think those are, uh, and, and actually, three previous speakers, uh, good, good points all. I think it would be interesting, um, and there are some points in here that aren't, it, it isn't immediately obvious to me why we would go down a particular path that, uh, that are embedded in these criteria. It would be interesting to circle back with somebody from the council to say, you know, like, I don't get this safeguard thing. Why is it important? And to get some, you know, real-world experience of, well, in Denver, they didn't have a safeguard and X happened. Or when, when in particular, it was useful for moving a district forward. So, um, I, I'm all for a critical review and what's, what seems useful to us and whatnot, um, and also circling back with the council, uh, because there may be something, uh, in their experience that we're missing.
So can I just explain, um, uh, why, why I, I suggested using this tool? I looked at, uh, we've, we've been talking about coming up with some, some mechanism to do a self-evaluation for a long time, and, um, and we really hadn't even, we, we hadn't talked about any of it, aside from, yeah, we ought to do it. So when Ailey asked me to, um, to help with coming up with some kind of process for, for, and professional development, um, I started looking at the available self-evaluation instruments that are out there in the world, and, um, and I have to say, most of them were very non, not impressive. They were, they tended to be just a, a kind of series of questions, somewhat random, it seemed to me. There was no rubric to understand, like, what, uh, most of them were very long, the OSBA is 72 questions long. Um, and there's no rubric provided to, you know, what does it mean that on question number 32, you answered a no, but on question 15, you answered a yes? Are those at all related? I, it, it was very, very unsatisfying as, um, any kind of evaluation tool. The, the council one is the most, uh, uh, of the ones that I looked at, and I looked at at least a dozen of them. It's the one that actually is coherent, um, has, has a model that it is aligned with, and, um, if you subscribe to the model, it gives you, um, you know, a real rubric to, to evaluate where you are in the different categories, and then, um, kind of identifies a pathway for improvement. Now, we may or may not decide to go forward with using this instrument, but we got to start someplace. If we're going to do this at all, we got to start someplace. This seemed like the most reasonable tool to use, and, um, we can decide at the end of tonight whether it was useful or not. And if it was useful, do we want to continue with it? Under what circumstances? How often? What do we want to do with it? But I think it is, uh, it's a starting place. And I'm hoping it'll get some, um, it'll prompt some conversations, some discussions that will, uh, allow us to kind of pinpoint some areas that we might want to focus on, and then, you know, suggest some concrete actions that we can take. So, um, I know we haven't had a full-on discussion about this particular instrument before trying to apply it, but it is consistent with the training that we've done over the last year and a half. So, um, so anyway, so there it is.
I guess, um-
Yep. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so, um, having gone through several sessions with AJ where he did, like, walk through our agenda, and like, how much does this match the time? I mean, I, I think there's some really strong elements to it, um, but there can also some, be some rigidity to, like, hey, we're only doing this, and it's like, oh yeah, but we have this, you know, legal obligation to do these other things, that sometimes if it's too rigidly adhered to, um, then you're not going to be able to meet your other legal obligations that you need to do. So for, for me, having just the past time that we've worked with, um, it seems like, um, the essence of it is worthwhile, um, and a good guide for act- activities, um, but how it gets implemented and the rigidity or flexibility is, um, I think a good topic for us to discuss.
And I, I think the hope from tonight is that, you know, we have been talking about, I think a sense that we all have, that things are going well, and we're moving in the right direction with the exceptional leadership we have as a district. And like you said, Michelle, there's a long way still to go. We still have a very wide achievement gap. We know, I think there's all things that we get irritated at, about how our processes are, and how we show up, and, and communication, and the way we function, and so, you know, this whole year of board development is this attempt to say, okay, the seven of us have, have had a year together now as a team, and so we're ready to really talk about what do we know, what's not working, and how do we improve? And so, you know, this tool has its, has its strengths and has its, uh, minuses, and I think, Julia, what you just said is, you know, that rigid adherence, and Michelle, I think you've said some things about, like, um, the way white supremacy sometimes shows up, and I, I think there's some elements of rigid adherence to a set of rules that kind of fall into that. But I think, just exactly like Andrew said, this is a great launching off point for us to really, I, I think every single person on this, uh, in, on the board wants to be a high-performing district, we give of our time, we give of our energy to do that, and it's like, okay, let's, let's start taking the steps that we need to do to really begin to be what we think we could be together. And, you know, we're going to disagree, and we're going to have different understandings of things, which is why this conversation tonight is super important, so that we can really, really do that work. Um, I'm looking at the clock and seeing that it's 4:43, so Michelle, I'm wondering if now would be a good time for a couple-minute stretch break? It's a, it's an ending time between one part of Rita's presentation and the next, which I happen to know, because I have her notes. So does that sound like a good thing to take a moment here to do a stretch break?
It does. Um, yeah, and I appreciate that, the, the cadence of the meeting here is great. My timer says it's still 11 minutes off. But that's probably because I got it started late. I, I started the timer late.
It didn't tell intro time, so.
Can we, can I, uh, can I offer a process improvement, just a suggestion, that after someone gets done talking and presenting, we say, are there any questions?
Hear, hear.
Because that way it's more of a, it's a discussion, not, it's like, I'm telling you this, and this is how we're doing it. Does anyone have any questions after what I just said? Just as best practice. So we make sure that every voice in the room, introvert, extrovert, whomever, has an opportunity to, in their own time, present a question.
Okay. So do we want to take a break, or do we want to wait 10 minutes?
Let's take a break now, I think it's a good timing.
Okay.
Two minutes, or how long? Two?
Two minutes.
Two is fine with me. Okay.
Sorry, I'm at the mountain. My son's working up here, so spending a lot of time up here.
That's great. Just a pretty background behind you with those trees.
It is that.
Rita, why don't you go ahead and, uh, start at the next section, and I know Andrew will be with us, uh, in, in a moment.
Okay. So in the spirit of being responsive, um, before we move on, any questions so far? Okay. So, um, so the next, the next thing I, I thought, um, I, I'd like to move right into the instrument and, um, in our responses. So if you, if you can take a look, I'm not going to bother trying to share my screen. So, um, if you can take a look at the, um, the scoring sheet that I sent out that compiled everybody's results, um, I think it would be helpful if we just take a couple of minutes to, to look at the overall result, and, um, does anything leap out at you? Was, is anything surprising about this? Does anything confirm your suspicions, or what, what do you see in this?
I, I feel like, uh, this holds my, uh, my reputation as the board optimist, um, because I gave higher scores on the values and guardrails and on the continuous improvement than the rest of y'all. Although Amy's out front there on the communication and collaboration, so, um, that was a piece. And I think whenever we score something, you know, we all have our own internal sort of, uh, way we score things, um, so that's part of it. But I do like that Michelle and Andrew are, are in agreement on everything, that's, that's pretty awesome.
I also, um, I hadn't responded that I scored a zero on, uh, guardrails, and the other one, I responded that just not applicable, because none of the criteria were anything that we had, uh, committed to monitoring.
I just want to say Andrew and I are more alike than you would think. So I noticed that right away, too, but I also noticed the range of scores, which I think that if you have a diverse group, you're going to expect a range. So I think that's a good, uh, I think that's a good marker of diversity, um, but I was, I was, the people graded, like, everything's great, like, on the, on the higher end, um, it was concerning, because I, I felt like I had maybe had missed some conversations or something. We are grading on things such as, do we send time at each board meeting to discuss where we're at, and we, we actually don't really, um, have those things regularly put on the agenda, so. And, and so there's also weren't applicable as well.
Yeah. I think, Michelle, you know, when I'm looking at it, on, on every single one except for one, we're all in the, in the two adjoining columns. So like, on vision and goals, we all either say we're approaching a meeting. On values and guardrails, we either say not student-focused or approaching, you know, um, there's only, communication and collaboration is the only one where we're spread across three columns. So while I do see diversity, I think we all, we all have a sense that we're not there yet, um, no matter where we are on the, on how high we scored.
I think another interesting thing, looking at it, and maybe this is, um, maybe to the conversation, Mich- or the point you just raised, Michelle, is one of the patterns I see is maybe a little bit difference between people who have been on the board for the longer period of time. I'm seeing just in sort of the middle column, um, more board members who have been longer, so- So when I looked at it, I wasn't just thinking of the last year. It's like a little bit of a continuum. So maybe that's reflective as well as we all are like starting with different baselines.
Anything else? So.
Just second, Rita, sorry, I was muted. I think also we can kind of look at it as a little bit of a chronological continuum going down the categories. Because to me, the first one, the vision and goals, is foundational. And that is the piece that we've worked on. And I think we've made a dramatic shift over the last year, slightly year plus, on being much more student achievement focused. But the, after that first criterion, the other ones were so specific about, you know, monitoring tools that we hadn't talked about that, you know, it's hard to focus on. But I think it's like, you're committed to the first and then you, each of them is a building block where you say, okay, how are we going to hold ourselves accountable for the general aspirations under each of these? And then build from there.
Okay, so.
One, one more thing I would like to say too about this, the vision and goals. Some of our members rated that as meeting student outcome focus. So at what point are we looking at actual outcomes? Because we still have like a large number of black boys that aren't meeting, you know, the vision and the goals that we set out, you know, a year and a half ago or whatever. Are we at some point, I mean, we have this intention, but at some point are we, what are we looking at in terms of, that's not an outcomes. It says we're meeting student outcomes focus. The focus is, is focused on student outcomes, yet the actual student outcomes, at what point do we look at that to grade ourselves on how well we're doing in that area? And I understand that might be, it might be, the tool that we're using might not have, you know, it might be a failing of the tool and that we're not saying how are kids actually doing compared to this vision that we have? Of course, we have a vision, you know, that all kids succeed. Closer we get into that.
So, Michelle.
I think actually monitoring the outcomes is, is our board goals themselves. And this is our tool for kind of checking on our governance. But we need to make sure that we're actually having fidelity to our board goals and that we're monitoring those on a quarterly basis.
Right, which, which we were and then COVID happened and it's kind of knocked things. But just when we were setting in, settling into that rhythm. So I, Michelle, my interpretation of that is, are we as a board, did we set up measurable goals that are focused on student achievement? And again, particularly on African American and Native American students. And then secondarily, then, do we have an administration that has a plan for actually beginning to meet those goals? Do we have interim goals that show progress towards that ultimate goal? And are we as a board focusing most of our time on how are we doing as a district? And on that, you know, we set up a quarterly monitoring specifically around the MAP tests and the other indicators that we're using. So it's not, nobody thinks we're meeting our goals. It's, are our meetings oriented towards focusing on those goals? With the theory being that the more we focus on those goals, the more our, our staff will be focused on meeting those goals. Because that's how we're going to evaluate the superintendent.
Right. I think maybe what.
Is it, and I'm sorry if that was mansplaining.
Thank you for being, thank you for being conscious about that. No, it wasn't at all. I, and that's how I, I mean, that's how I use the tool.
Okay.
And, and yeah, you're right. I mean, COVID has interrupted some of that reporting. And I understand, I've gotten reports from, from Russ Brown, for instance, on how we're, how we're looking at progress.
I think maybe, to state Michelle's point a slightly different way, is like even if we were, like met all the criteria of the mastering student outcomes focus, we shouldn't pat ourselves on the back if actually the outcomes have not. So we have to be careful just thinking of this as a tool, like, hey, we're doing all these things. We're all in the right hand column. We've, you know, are in the high performance in the governance state. But like, if it actually doesn't, hasn't translated to growth and performance, better performance, then it doesn't, then we've got to think about the tool. So I think, is that, Michelle, a different way of looking at it or?
Yeah, yes, thank you. It's interesting that I need a translator on the board. But, but I, but yeah, it is, thank you for clarifying.
Sorry, I didn't.
And Scott too.
So I didn't, I didn't mean to clarify, I just want to make, was that the point you were making?
Yes, it was the point I was trying to make.
Okay, then I got it.
Thank you.
So I, I think, I mean, I, I think this is going to be the dilemma, really, no matter what tool we use and no matter which category we look at, that there's a, there's a distinction between, like when we're talking about the goals, there's a distinction between what the board's piece of accomplishing the goals can be versus accomplishment of the goals, which is actually going to happen at, at the district level. So, so this is for, for the board's piece of this. How, how did we do? How are we doing? So even if we, you know, even if we all marked ourselves, you know, gave us the highest grades on vision and goals, because we have them, it doesn't necessarily mean that we've accomplished the goal. But it's, I, I think this tool is, and this tool is new for me too. So it's like, I'm interpreting it along with everybody else. But it seems to me that it's trying to get the board to focus on our focus. Like what is it that we're spending our time and energy and muscle on? As opposed to other things? So, so for the vision and goals, you know, I marked us as meeting minus, sort of. Because we actually, we actually have goals. We actually adopted a vision, like they exist. And that's, that's not nothing. Have we, but it says nothing about the progress we've made toward achieving the goal. It's just, are we, do we have goals and are we paying attention to them? So, so I think we're going to have to keep going back and, back and forth as we go through this thing to distinguish between, you know, the district outcomes versus our, the way we're doing our work. Does that make sense?
It does. I completely agree. The, the presence of the vision and goals is what we're evaluating ourselves on, that we have, we have that.
Yeah, yeah. So.
When we get to the accountability and measuring piece is where we're holding the super, we're holding ourselves and the superintendent accountable to meeting those goals and visions, right? Like that's the number four or whatever on this list.
Okay, let's, let's hold off on that until we get there. Because, because I think it gets, I, I think that's where it really gets tricky and how to figure out how to answer these things. Okay, so, so let's go through the, let's go through the different categories, kind of one by one. And we've talked a fair amount about vision and goal. Does anybody feel the need to continue on that? Okay. So, so let's move on to the next one, values and guardrails. And I, I'm going to.
Actually, Rita. That is a pretty important, could we, could we spend a few minutes on that?
Yeah. I think, I think it would be important. I, I think we, within some nuances, we're reasonably close to a shared assessment, but it would be worth it to kind of talk that through a little bit. And also to identify if we wanted to move up a step. One is, is that far right, far right column where we want to go to? And if so, what's the next step we could take to get there?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm proposing that and if, if others agree, great. If you don't, we'll keep going.
I think it's a fine idea. Does somebody want to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I'm, Scott, maybe I might have missed the nuance of what you just said. Could you, could you repeat one more time? I'm also trying to bring it up, so I have it on a separate tab, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's worthwhile with all of these to look at the far right column, which is the high functioning board. See if that's where we want to go, if, what part of that we, or all of it, that we immediately embrace. And then figure out what's a concrete next step or steps that we can take to move us closer, if that's where we want to go.
Yes, I think that's a really good suggestion. And, and I think, and I think particularly spending some time on this one, just because it is by far the, the highest value. And again, that based on research, right, from Center for Great City Schools. So I, you know, I'll just, I wrote some comments down, so I'll just, if it's okay, I'll, I'll start with those. When I was going through and scoring this one, and I'm jumping back and forth because I don't have things printed out between tabs, but you know, I, I, I thought we were in the first, you know, the, the, the approaching student outcomes focus. Because I thought this was one area where we've adopted, there is a vision, we do have goals. And, you know, we, we understand inputs, outputs and outcomes. And, you know, we've, we have hosted a whole, you know, visioning session with the community, the district did. What, what sort of stuck out, the reason why we, for me, we couldn't get sort of above sort of that second column was, you know, that I wasn't sure interim goals were as well defined. We have some interim goals, but, and, and as I recall, and I didn't have a chance to go back and look at them all, as I recall, there, there is still a little bit of lack of clarity around those interim goals and whether they're, they're defined for each one of our, of our board goals. I also thought engagement comes up a lot in this. And while our engagement around the vision was inclusive, it wasn't, we didn't actually have much of engagement around goal setting. I, I also made a comment here that might be controversial, but I'm not sure there's much value in engagement around goal setting. I, I think the value from it, in my experience, comes from, you get a little bit more buy-in from the community. But this is one of those moments where, and again, this is not necessarily a popularly held belief, but having done performance management for government for a long time, vision is really important. Vision, the public has a, has a sense of. Specific measures and where we should be on the specific measures, the, the public doesn't, nor should we necessarily expect them to. This is what representative democracy is about. We elect people who are intended to, you know, get smart on these things and work with district staff and go to Harvard and do all these things to then set the goals for the district. Asking whether we should achieve a goal, the community, whether we should achieve a goal in two years or three years or five years. I, I don't know if we're going to get a whole lot of value from that type of engagement. But that said, I'm disagreeing with what, you know, with what the, the academics, you know, say is really important, which is that you've done a lot of that, a lot of that community. I did my last comment, I did feel like we could get to mastery on this one without too much effort. I feel like we are on our way. And if we really put focus on, on getting to column three and four, I think we could do that within one or two years.
Hey, Andrew, back to your point about interim goals. I think we were extremely pragmatic in our goal setting, to the point where I know several of us were cringing because it doesn't feel great to aspire to, you know, something less than proficiency. So in a sense, to me, our goals, our, our ultimate goal is eliminating our achievement and opportunity gap and getting all of our kids to proficiency at every grade level. I mean, that, that's not a smart goal, which is why we didn't adopt it. But to me, that probably should be our goal. And then if we're goal setting for three to five years, each of the goals that we've actually laid out are really interim goals. Like this is the incremental progress. It's just a different way of looking at it. But I, I know that it doesn't feel great for a lot of us to sort of have such overly pragmatic goals that don't speak to the full potential of every child in every school year.
So my understanding of what we've kind of agreed to do in this moment is to look at each of the categories and sort of say what we think around sort of how do we get to number four? Or if we even agree with that fourth column, is that correct? Okay. Just checking to make sure I'm cracking with where we are. Anyone else want to weigh in on this first category?
In, in what way? Is this when we're going to talk about it? I mean. I wasn't sure how like, what process we were going to use. So, you know, I, I was, sometimes that can be a tougher greater depending on things. And one of the reasons, like I think we've done great work, but a couple of things that I was going back to, and so like, do I feel like we're approaching it right? I, I really still think the, the marrying of the growth with proficiency is a missing piece. And it's, I'm just looking at it through, through my view as a parent, is growth is important. Proficiency is always like that, that end goal. And then the other thing is, and this is, and maybe this falls into Scott's category of like, what would we do to, what would, what would it take for me to feel like I knew the next category? And so in addition to adding the proficiency as the sort of knowing where we're going would be the fleshing out of the middle school, the middle grades. Because we talked about that, but we still have an S back heavy goal. And then the, the data on the high schools, that subdata on the various components of it is just getting the baseline data. I felt like, to me, that would feel like moving towards the next evolution of our goals, which I think on the basis is we have, we have the right base and just sort of filling it out more fully.
Right, can you say that last thing again? I didn't quite catch it.
I think we have the right basis of focusing on growth. I think that it's more complicated, but I, to explain to the public. And I think, but I think we have the right base. But I do think to evolve it further, we need to finish some pieces to it that we had talked about. The, we'd need to have a more fleshed out middle school goal that's not just dependent upon S back. Because that doesn't really get us to, it doesn't get us to what the, our vision, a student portrait. And then we don't, we don't marry this with proficiency, which I think is what most parents and most students, it's sort of, that's, that's where we're heading. And the growth is what gets us there. And that's what we want to measure, because it can't just be proficiency, but keep that as baseline. And then the third piece is on that last goal, which was the high school goal. We never had the baseline data dropped in. So again, to Scott's question of how would we evolve to the next column? That's, that's how I would see that happening.
Okay.
Yeah. Jill, Julie, I want to agree with you that that's one reason I didn't put us in the, in a, in a four or whatever that category is, is those, the middle school and the high school goals still need, need some refinement. need some refinement. That, that was probably the, the biggest reason. And, and I think our, our interim goals were fairly crude. It was like, okay, if we want to go from here to here, uh, well, here, here, here. They're, they're not, they're, they're good, good for starting, but, uh, I'd be interested if there's other, uh, other ways to do interim goals. And that's, again, maybe a question we can go back to the council on to get some, if there's, uh, some better examples of interim goals. And I don't know, may, maybe what we have is, is fine. It's just a question I'd have.
So I, I, I tend to agree, I, I think, and I think Amy mentioned this. I think what we have now are actually interim goals that should be under a, a little more, um, aspirational, logical.
Which is proficiency.
So I, I, I disagree with that.
I, this is making me really, I, I feel like we're revisiting the goal-setting conversation. And I think, you know, we did yeoman's work to come up with these goals. And I'm very, and you know, we agreed that they would be three-year goals. And I'm very, very hesitant. I think we can do some refining of like the middle school and the high school goal. We can talk about how, how we see proficiency as relating to growth. But I say, I don't want us to redo the goals. I think that we need to, we need to be moving forward, not backwards. Um, I do hear what you're saying, Rita, about more aspirational. And I think that's where the vision and the graduate portrait come in, of this is where we're going, and this is the first set of goals that are going to get us there. And in three years, when we post the achievement gap, the, the next board is going to set another set of goals that get us closer to those, those aspirational sort of exciting, hopeful things. But, I mean, I don't, I, I think we have a tendency to let the perfect get in the way of the good. And I think the goals we have now are good, and I think we need to spend our time working, working on how do we as a board organize and support one another and the district and hold them accountable, right? And, and push to get us to meet those goals, right? Instead of perfecting, I'd rather refine than perfect, if that makes sense.
Right.
Ailey, you beat me to it.
Okay.
Oh, with you.
Okay, so are we ready to move on to the next? Okay, so then the next category is values and guardrails. The board will, in collaboration with the superintendent, adopt guardrails aligned with the vision and goal. And I think we were universally, no, Ailey, you have, you thought we had something. The rest of us pretty much thought we had nothing. So, um, can I put you on the spot and ask you wh- what you're seeing that the rest of us are not?
Well, I don't think we have formal guardrails that we've adopted, right? We haven't done that. But I think we've done work with the theory of action, um, and the sort of, um, working with our staff that also went to Harvard to sort of have a shared sense of like, what does, um, what are the values of how we get to where we're going? So I rated us a little higher, because while we don't have formal guardrails adopted, I think we've been sort of cohesive in adopting the sort of shared set of, this is our theory of action, this is what we're going to focus on, this is, is how we're going to behave. Um, so that's why I gave it a little higher score. But we, we don't have any formal guardrails. And I wonder, I wonder, um, if we need those. I mean, again, research-based and Harvard people know more than me. But, but what would that look like and how do we, we create those? And is that really the best use of our time? But Amy, it looks like you might have a contribution there.
Well, I was just going to say, I wouldn't mind chucking this one. Um, I think the intention of it is to, um, hold us accountable for not doing the things that we're not supposed to do, which is basically interfering with management and operations. And focusing on governance. But I, it was hard for me to wrap my head around, um, how spending time establishing guardrails could really be very helpful. So to me, I'd be happy to just get rid of this.
And I read the guardrails as pertaining to what the board is telling the superintendent that they can't do. That the guardrails are not necessarily for the board, they're more for the superintendent. But maybe I misunderstood that.
The, the examples they gave were, definitely seemed to be oriented towards the superintendent. The only one I could think of, um, today that would make sense, uh, and this isn't really related to our current superintendent, but to an, our almost hire from a couple of years ago was, thou shalt not have consulting business on the side. But I, I feel no, no need to lay that down now as a marker.
So I, I, sorry.
Go ahead.
I actually had a thought about guardrails. And, I mean, the, the one, the examples that they give, I don't, I don't think they add much, so. But, but I, it did occur to me that, um, there is a guardrail that, that I would kind of like to see. And because all of our, because our goals are very quantitative, and, and of necessity focused on testing of one kind or another. And, you know, racking up, um, uh, racking up credits and that kind of thing. I would ki- I would be interested in having a guardrail saying something like, um, the pursuit of, of, I'm going to be really crude here, the, you know, the pursuit of good test scores should not come at the expense of, um, a, um, you know, promotion of whole child well-being, something like that. Because I think it might, it might help allay some of the fears that people have related to tests. Because I, I mean, frankly, I'm pretty confident that the current administration isn't just test-focused, um, but, but that's, that's because I, I've spent time around them and I know them and I couldn't imagine them doing that. But people who don't have the benefit of that, it might be comforting. A- anyway, that's, that's the only thing I could think of that, um, that would make me want to spend time on this.
I, I thought we were using this as a, like, this is a research-based, data-driven tool. So are we saying we can kind of pick and choose, localize it, I guess, for, for our own use? That we can pick and choose what's important to us?
I think that was Julia's point about strict adherence. So we're having the conversation right now about, is this metric one we feel has value to PPS? And yes, you know, the, the research has said this has been helpful for other school districts. Do we think it's helpful for us? Is this something we want to invest our time in?
So I, I, I think this is, uh, sorry, Andrew, were you, you were cued up?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is something that, um, we should talk to the council about to see if we're missing something. And if we aren't, you know, there's plenty of other, plenty of other work to do that we can work on.
So getting back, because I think Michelle just, just made a really good point, um, and better than I think I made it at the very beginning. I, I, I think it's fine for us to adapt it, but I think we need to be very, very careful when we do. And Scott, you hit the follow-up point, which you just made again, of like, if we are going to adapt it, let's check in with the experts and talk about the risks. Because dropping some of these things will create its own set of risks. And it might feel good to us, because it, that's what we do. But we might actually find out that there, as you said earlier, that there's, you know, school districts that have tried that and, and really failed. So, so yes, I'm okay adapting it, as long as we're explicit about it and there's some, see what the risks that we're creating are. Specifically on guardrails, rated a zero, because we don't have any guardrails. Um, and, and I was struggling a little, and, but it just now occurred to me, um, you know, a guardrail, we didn't formalize it, but a guardrail that I think Julia put in place, um, with our, with our data, was as, as we were talking about increasing the, you know, um, children of color, you know, you know, achieving these benchmarks. Um, you know, she said, look, I want to see the disaggregated data. And even though that isn't in our formal goal, we made it really clear to the superintendent that we don't want to see one group, you know, accelerate the other groups, you know, one group go up by 20 points, but other groups drop by five. And guess what? You had a 15-point increase, and isn't that great? So like, that is the type of guardrail we haven't formally adopted. But I would be interested, you know, obviously, as Ailey said, tonight's not the night to talk about the specifics, but I would be interested in, in talking about, do we want to formally adopt some of those moving forward?
I, you, you and Rita have converted me to, we, it would be a good thing to have a couple of guardrails like that that help articulate, you know, exactly that. And I think you're right, that's what I, why I scored us a little higher. I think we've informally done it, but I don't think we have explicitly done it. And I think that being explicit mattered.
And I think we should get, I think Scott's suggestion also of getting some more examples, because it was like, I gave it a low score, because like, we don't have any, but it's sort of, and then I was starting to think like, well, what would they be? And I was like, okay, I think, um, we got so focused on, you know, the, the goals that we didn't spend as much time there, and I, it's not at all, I think, a criticism. It's just like, maybe that's the next, next evolution. The one thing I would say is the other reason why I couldn't get in that next column was that, um, you know, we made a decision, and I'm not, this isn't like bad, good, or whatever, but we also didn't, um, evaluate the superintendent solely on the district performance goals. We added that, those other competencies. And again, not saying good or bad, but again, this is the, uh, little bit like, are we going to be flexible or rigid? And, and those aren't, one's not better than the other, but it's like, which ones are, which ones is, are, is it okay to be flexible on? And which ones are we like compromising, um, on, you know, maybe student outcomes? So, that's where I landed.
So, could I do a process check here and see, uh, with Rita or fearless leader on this? Are we making progress in terms of what you had in mind for this session?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it's, I, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I mean, this is the first time any of us is tackling this instrument. So, I, I mean, we need to figure out if this is working. You know, does this make sense? Is this useful? I think it's mostly, um, a tool to generate discussion that we can, you know, kind of codify in, in some logical way. But it's not like I had any, I don't have any illusions that by the end of today, we're going to have actual decisions made about specific things. I think what we can try to do at the end of it is come up with things we want to look at more closely. You know, things we, other things we might want to explore. In, in any categories, are there concrete actions that we want to take in order to make a move to the next column? You know, but, but I, I mean, this is mostly discussion and trying to figure out how to, how to do a self-evaluation of a board function. And, and see kind of how, how we all match each other's perceptions about where we are and where we want to be. So. That's the best I was hoping for.
To me, this seemed like the easiest. To me, this seemed like the easiest one, because most of it, it's almost like most of it is like calendaring, uh, for us to move across and then just being disciplined to do it. I mean, it's, it's less culture shift and more like a calendar-like discipline, it seems.
Are you talking about the monitoring and accountability one, Julia?
Yeah.
Okay, I actually wanted to clarify, so yeah, because I think, Julia, you had mentioned the superintendent's evaluation, which is on the monitoring and accountability, which I was still on the guardrails one. So apologies if we were talking different things.
Sorry.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that we, that we were on the same page. But yeah, are we moving on to that one?
I, I guess we're moving on, okay.
Yeah.
So, next one.
Monitoring. What was that?
I'm just trying to see if Amy had something to say, because she leaned forward. I'm trying to read Zoom body language.
Um, no, that's because I'm literally trying to read, so I have to get closer to my computer.
Oh, my gosh, you guys are all hysterical, because we all just did ridiculous body language, so it's great.
Okay, next one, um, monitoring and accountability. The, the board will devote significant time monthly to monitoring progress toward the vision and goal. So I just want to clarify, um, this is, we're not talking about the, the dis- like, the district-level accountability. This is board-level accountability. Like, are we spending our time on the things that we say matter? Okay, so.
I would say that I think we've got a ways to go, but we've gotten immensely better at this. And, and now it is a practice, whereas it didn't used to be.
So we were split, looking at the, at the, um, scoring sheet, we were split between the first two columns. So three were in not student-focused, four were in approaching student outcomes-focused, with, with Julia being a minus there. So splitting the difference. So for those of you who, I, I mean.
No, minus was an option.
Can you say a little bit about why they graded the way they did? Go ahead, Ailey.
I was just teasing Julia, I was saying I didn't know minus was an option. No, I, it's, it's, I'm totally teasing, because, you know, I think we get to use this tool as we would see fit.
Well, it's also thinking outside of the box, which maybe we could use more of.
Well, three of us took it as an option, so there you go.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in. I mean, I, I, I took the tool very literally. So when it, you know, when it said you have to, to move on, you, you have to sort of have everything in the column before and everything in the column you're in. Um, there are things in the second column that we have done, but getting back to Julia's point she just made about the superintendent being evaluated only on performance, regarding the, you know, the board's goals and guardrails. Well, we didn't do that, and we very explicitly didn't do that. So that, for me, meant we, we couldn't be in that column, because, because we didn't achieve that, because we chose not to. Moving forward, if we choose to adapt that and, and take some other things, then, then I think we can. The other comments I wrote down about this, um, tracking of board time, I love the concept. Um, I think, I, I can't, I don't have a historical, but I, I think we absolutely have been talking about that over this last year. So I think actually tracking it would be great. I don't love the goal of spending 50% of our board time monitoring goals. Um, that's the, to sort of the mastery, that seemed too high to me. So again, I hate to disagree with the experts, but, um, that just felt like, 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 that's, that's a lot. Even if we have shorter board meetings, it's still a lot of time on, on monitoring goals. Um, and I also, and this is actually, I repeat, I think of what Julia said earlier. So apologies for just, um, taking her talking points, but, um.
I'll send you some more.
Yeah, no, I, I, thanks. But I really, I, I don't, I don't agree that, that anything not legally mandated or part of the goal monitoring is, is by definition the superintendent's work. I think one goal, this is what I wrote down last night late, uh, one goal of, of representative democracy is to present information, um, as well as some pomp and circumstance to the public. And so, um, I felt like this framework really devalued the importance of that work. And it might surprise some of you, um, to hear me say that, because I'm generally the one sort of pushing back a little bit. But I, I think we do spend too much time on that, but I don't think that time should be zero. Um, and so finding that middle ground. And so what I wrote is that I, I think that is important. I do think we should have some guardrails around how much time, you know, we, we bring in, you know, the winners of band competitions and other things, that, that's important, but it shouldn't be the main focus. Um, but I also don't want to say, and things like last night, the presentation on the reopening, that was not so much for us as it was for the public. And, and that, that's an important moment that our meetings can provide. There are a lot of parents who contacted me who watched, because I said, oh, hey, they're going to talk more, and here's a slide, and they were like, oh, okay, that's really useful. So I don't want, I don't want to lose, I don't want to lose that. So this, this category for me, I, I'd like to have some conversation going forward about what we want to take from it and what we may not.
So I think it would be useful to, um, monitor our agenda time. Come up with some sort of categories, you know, three or four categories to put agenda items in. Kind of keep track of how much time we spend it on, just as a feedback tool, not, uh, over the next couple of months, not as a. we're trying to hit 25% or 50% or whatever. But just to get that kind of baseline, I, I, I think that it, that could be interesting, just to give us some information.
Can, can I do an FYI here on the time? Apparently Karen used to track how much time we spent on the different agenda items. So we, we have the, you know, the aspirational time for each agenda item. She used to actually, used to track the actual time. Since Karen left, that has not been done, but it could be done. So it, it's eminently doable. And I think, I think it could be useful info.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think we should track it too. I know a lot of nonprofits do track their volunteer hours and it would be, you know, it might give us some daylight into, you know, are we working harder, not smarter? Which I think happens sometimes with our work. Also, I think also moving forward, it could be, you know, as we, as we help to diversify the board over time, we'd be able to explain what time commitments look like and maybe be, if it's not so all-consuming or open to different types of people volunteering for this position, which is a personal, a personal goal of mine. You know, you shouldn't have to be retired to do this job.
Did not agree with her, Michelle.
Just, just tired, not retired, just.
Just tired, tired's fine, but retired, you know, I mean, that's something that I think about all the time, like, who, who can actually do this job and do it well? And it's not set up for diverse candidates to come in and, and do this work that are working full-time necessarily.
I think that's a great point. And Michelle, I don't know if you guys saw the Wednesday weekly update I sent out yesterday, but we're trying to make sure that executive sessions go on the first week and learning sessions go on the second week, just to try to have a more regular rhythm, to try to honor people's time. And, you know, so I think, you know, Amy, last year, there were so many times things popped up and it's like, we have to get this scheduled and we'll see how well, you know, life does with our plans, but it's, it's trying to make things a little more regular if we can. But I know, Amy, you've, I've only experienced it for like a month, but all those times, you know, you got a phone call, it's like, we need to schedule an executive session this week. When are you available? And it's like, okay.
No, I agree. That's kind of unreasonable. But we've come a long way since our weekly meetings, though.
Oh, God. So to look at this, the monitoring and accountability and not get caught up in the, overall, I think this is, this is a good, a good thing. Not to get caught up in the 50% or 25%, but I'm thinking about next steps that we can take. And so looking down the, that column on the right as being aspirational, one is just starting to monitor our time at board meetings. So how much of that is focused on student outcomes? And I agree with Andrew that there's, there's a lot of important things that we do that aren't, aren't strictly, you know, cut, cut and dried on those, on our goals. That, that the third point there is that we stay pretty consistent with our goals and our guardrails. And I, I think we've, so far, so good. The fourth point is achieve the annual ending point, I think, has to do with actually, is the district achieving, making progress on the four goals that we've laid out? And in this environment, that's just going to be tough. But we should at least monitor that and, you know, check where we are. We might have to do, you know, if the superintendent has suggested, we might have to do a reset on our metrics because of COVID, and it is what it is. And that last point, I think, was our resources prioritized towards our goals. And, and that maybe means that as we adopt and after we adopt the budget, that we go back and, and do a kind of an evaluation session. Because we all know in the heat of the moment, you know, this last year and this coming year could be the same thing of a very compressed decision-making timeline. It's, it's imperfect, and I don't think it would be a bad thing right now to go back and look.
Yeah. And that is, I mean, that's some of the work we tasked the CBRCs with doing, Scott, is, you know, we actually asked them to look at our goals and to look at the budget through the, the lens of the board goals and through the lens of the vision. And to say, are we allocating resources in a way that isn't in, that is in line with what the board has stated our goals are? So we have that, you know, community collaboration on that area.
Is that something that we can get feedback on, like in the next month, two months?
Well, the CBRCE did give us their report, but I know that as things are shifting, they're just ramping up for their next year and, and haven't quite established yet.
Yeah, so it's, that's something we should get before we start the next budget session, ideally.
Okay, so, I, I, I think I have two things to say. I think we need to be thinking also about committee, not just the regular board meetings, but also the committee time and what we're spending that time on. And then I think in, in terms of next steps, getting, getting a clear monitoring calendar that we adopt, I think will help a lot. And that's, that's coming down the pipe, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and Andrew had pinned you a couple of days ago. So if you could check in with me on that. And I think, Julia, you were going to send me something. We talked, Amy.
Was this like an accountability session now?
It is now, yeah. And Michelle, I want to touch base with you again. There's been four or five really good suggestions.
Oh, we've already had coffee, though. I, I'm caught up. Happy to do that with you, too.
But again, as soon as I get everybody's suggestions, I'll feed them back out again. So we see all those good ideas and, and then Ailey and I will do our best to work with staff to, to massage the, tweak the work sessions.
Just to let you know, Scott and I are meeting every Monday at 11:00 to just touch base and talk to each other about what's going on and what we know. And it, it really helps when I turn the volume on on my computer so I can actually hear him.
Because sometimes you don't.
It's only happened twice. It's fine. He's talking. I'm like, I can't hear you. And it's because I didn't turn my volume on.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the next category?
I was wondering, Michelle, if we could, if we're timed for a break again?
Yeah, it's been an hour.
It's in three minutes and 49 seconds. We can take it now.
I just, is that okay if we do it before we transition to the next section?
I think that's fantastic. Yes.
Okay. Two minutes?
Do some, on some music, do some dancing.
That was a big sigh, Amy.
Oh, was that a heavy sigh?
Yeah. I do heavy sighs a lot, and so does my daughter. And one time I'm like, oh, she sighs a lot. And my husband was like,
She comes by it honestly.
I think it's because I'm hungry.
It's also oxygenating.
That's good. It was really just pranayama, not a heavy sigh.
There you go. I forgot to eat lunch today, so I solved the problem by getting a Marion Berry shake at Burger Bell, which, which seemed to be a really good choice.
'Tis the season.
Julia, you're muted. You're muted, Julia.
I was saying something really important, like, what about the Walla Walla onion rings? Because it's the season as well.
They were out. They didn't have anymore. They said they're done.
I ordered some two weeks ago. They were amazing.
At a dollar a piece, they better be.
Where in town can you get them, though? I mean, like Tad's Chicken and Dumplings?
Tad's Chicken and Dumplings is the best.
That commercial brought to you by Tad's Chicken and Dumplings. And now we'll resume with section four of our board evaluation.
Okay, communication and collaboration. The board will lead transparently and include stakeholders in the pursuit of the vision and goal. So we had, this was one of the categories where we had a, a bigger range than in other ones. So does somebody want to start with why you scored the way you did?
Amy, lead, lead with the positive. You, you were, you were our leader out there.
What, what was I approaching? I'm not looking at that right now.
You were meeting.
Moving, meeting minus.
I mean, maybe I'm just, that was kind of coming from a PTSD place that we've made a lot of improvement. But it's looking a little generous right now.
Well, and Amy, I do want to say, like, you know, your leadership over this last year as our board chair, I think, you know, you worked really hard to, to continue to move us forward towards these goals and, and did an excellent job at that. And so I can see why, like, the PTSD of like negotiating all of that, you know, you see how far we've come in a way that like, I don't necessarily, because I wasn't on the board before and wasn't the chair last year. So, so thank you for all you've done to really help us move forward on this.
Yeah.
I, I, sorry, Michelle, go ahead. I was going to say a couple of the things that came in the not student outcomes focus that I think I rated on was any meeting of the board lasted more than eight hours during the previous 12-month period. I mean, we got one that approached, I think it was six hours. And that the board did not receive the final version of materials to be voted on at least three calendar days, which has happened a, a couple of times.
Yeah.
And so I thought, you know, that was enough for me to mark it, that we were in the not student outcomes-focused category there. Yeah. God knows if we have that, that starts at six o'clock. I mean, that's terribly inefficient.
No, we, yeah, we used to go to like 11:00 or 12:00 routinely. And I think it is, I guess all I want to say about that is just that I, I do feel like this is something that's really important to pay attention to and that it's, it's easier than, as Julia was saying before, some of the things that require a more nuanced culture shift. Like, this just requires discipline, in my opinion.
Which is a culture shift for some of us.
So, one of the reasons why I rated this lower is this issue of getting the documents in advance, not only for us, but the community. And it just, almost every meeting, we have something that isn't, isn't ready. And sometimes there's a totally valid reason, but we consistently just have things that aren't, aren't posted. And a lot of times the board doesn't get it till late and the public doesn't really get it at all. So people comment. So to me, that's a, that's more like a staff discipline than a board, a board discipline.
If, on that, sorry, Julia, I didn't mean to cut you off. But I, on that point, because I, I think you're right, there are definitely times where that's happened. We also, as a district, invest very, very little in. We also, as a district, invest very, very little in staff support for the board. And, and I, that's been a conscious decision of boards for probably a long time. I can't really speak to the history of it. And when you compare the staff supporting the board to any other government that I'm aware of regionally, I don't know about other school districts, right? But we are also the largest school district. It's very, very small. So for me, the question there becomes not so much a staff discipline, because I don't think we can ask them more. Okay.
Can I just, timeout, because that's not a statement at all about the board office. Because I, I know personally that Roseanne and Kara, like, are, they, you know, they, having been in board leadership, they set, here's the materials you need to be getting in, here's the process they need to go through, because they had got to, you know, they come to the board office, they get, you know, they've been approved by the superintendent. So I want to make clear, this is not a reflection, it's they don't get to the board office. So, I, I don't, I don't want it to be at all.
Yeah.
Because I know they work overtime and...
Right, no, that's an important distinction. And I guess what I would say is, because we don't have additional staff supporting the board, that, that role of providing materials to the board falls to staff who, who have other jobs, right? So, I mean, their, their job is to run their unit, their division, their department, whatever it is. And, and then, by the way, the board needs this, that, the other thing. And so, I, I found it interesting that this one is, I, I would be interested in hearing more from the people who created this, why this is student-focused, student outcome-focused? Because my concern is that actually, we spend a tremendous amount of time preparing materials for the board rather than actually improving student outcomes. And those things are not, they don't, they don't, they don't go together. And, and I, I made this comment to Stephanie just the other day in our check-in about, like, the materials we do get are very high-quality, very professional, you know, PowerPoint slide, I mean, very thorough. And I, I can't help but think to myself, every time I see them, wow, this is like five, 10, maybe 15 hours, right, of work that went into this, that did not go into improving student outcomes. It just went into informing the board and, and also informing the public. And as we talked about earlier, that's something. So, I, I guess I just want to be careful on this one. To me, we do get a lot of last-minute things. If we each had, I mean, I'm just going to let you know, Metro counselors are part-time, so they, they get paid part-time and they each have a full-time staff person assigned to them. Each one of them has a full-time staff person assigned to them. Those people do a lot of the work that we currently put on our staff, our senior staff, right, outside of the board office. So, there is a resource allocation question here. I would not advocate for that. I am not advocating for that. But I think we need to be really careful before we get too critical of not getting these materials. Are we actually funding the people who could help pull that stuff together to provide it? And I think instead, we've, we've directed those resources to, to the place where it's going to have more of an impact on student outcomes.
Or, another alternative is have more realistic timelines. So, like, if that contract isn't actually ready on Thursday, just move it to the next board meeting. So that's, I mean, that's an alternative in a way that, like, hey, we don't, you know, if you don't, if we don't get it in, then just put it on the next, the next board meeting versus doing something that short-circuits a process.
And this is kind of why I kiddingly said, let's, let's, let's tell staff when we're going to have a meeting and actually meet a week after that, so we get out of the hamster wheel. But, because I think there is, there is that sense of we're caught in this, our staff is caught in this wheel. But I think also, it's an interesting idea whether we want to invest in maybe one other staff person who's, has a primary job of putting together those presentations or gathering that material as, as opposed to, you know, Luis or his staff putting together something. I think that's a good question to ask the superintendent about whether that makes sense. And it might end up being a real cost-saving if that turns out to be a more efficient way of doing things. So we, we free up those, those senior leaders and their next level, their reports to do the work as opposed to what do we have to do to present to the board?
The other, the other thing I'll, I'll jump in on here is that what, what definitely kept me out of the second column was all consent-eligible items were placed on the consent agenda and all, but a few were voted on using a consent agenda. And I just think it's worth pointing out that we have consent agenda items pulled every single week. That's a practice as, as a board that we have. And so I think this is one we should have a conversation as a board. Do we want consent agenda to be consent agenda or, or not? And if it is, we're not following best practice when it, when it comes to that.
So, what is worth, Andrew, as one of the primary, primary policies?
The queen.
It used to be called the business agenda. So, like, just, you know, it, it had, it's like, here's the business agenda. And I do think one of the things is, if you have everything on the business agenda, four days or whatever, the Thursday before, you have the opportunity to ask a question, then you have a lot fewer things pulled from the business agenda. And that doesn't always happen. I mean, the other night, we had the whole, you know, we've had several board meetings where things are coming in or the resolution change has changed. So, I, I do think there is, it's a good conversation to have. I also think there are some reasons why things get pulled from agendas. It's also moved. It used to be at the end of the, end of the meeting, not the beginning of the meeting. Sometimes things got resolved by the end of the meeting. So, so the alternative now is, like, the recent practice, and I think it's, I think it's good to try different things, but the recent practice is, if you want to have a discussion about something, then you have to pull it versus you could ask a question and then just vote on it. And again, I think it's good to try a number of different ways, what, what ends up working. But we've made a number of changes that in some ways have changed, have changed the practice.
And Julia, you told me once that, that one of the reasons you sometimes pull things from the consent agenda is because one of the findings in the Secretary of State's audit was about the board, you know, paying attention to contracts. And so one of the, one of the things you're trying to honor is what you, what that audit said. And so I think this also goes into our conversation as a board that we're going to be having soon about our response to the Secretary of State audit. And I know Scott's going to reach out to you to talk more about that, so we can, you know, because I think if we're clear around why we're doing what we're doing and what we need to be doing to make each board member feel like we're honoring the things we need to be honoring in the Secretary of State's audit and with the public and those pieces, then I think that that leads to a better understanding of how we're operating. So this is, I think the consent agenda and the contracts are part of a bigger conversation that we're working on having as a board.
I totally agree with the statement you made. And I think, and it's not just Secretary of State's, I think also, like, what, what items get on the consent agenda? Because it's sort of decided by somebody else, and I'm not quite sure what criteria is, what makes it a consent agenda item versus something else. And, like I say, it used to be called the business agenda and it was generally contracts. And then it got to be settlements and, and then things didn't get posted, you know, three days before. So, there's, there's a variety of reasons. I think it's, I think it merits a longer conver, a longer conversation.
I, I think the question about what gets on the consent agenda goes back to the heart of our exercise right now, which is that if it's not student achievement-focused, then just about everything that's not student achievement-focused should go on in a consent agenda. I mean, that's the premise here in terms of good governance. We can discuss whether or not we all agree with that or not.
Again, it's probably a longer conversation, because there's a fair number of things that, you know, like, for example, in these number of resolutions we do, may not be student, student-focused, but we do it for a purpose outside of the business agenda.
And I think we all want to be really clear that we're not, like you said, Julie, we're not criticizing staff. We know that Kara and Roseanne are amazing. They work really hard. Our senior staff is amazing and work really hard. It's, it's the whole, I think, you know, this piece around communication and collaboration is just exactly that. Like, if we aren't, if we aren't feeling like we're getting the communication we need to do our work as a board in the time we need to do it, then it is a little inherent on us to say, do we need different staff? Do we need to set our consent agenda differently? You know, how can we set ourselves up for success and, and to be high-performing? And I think, you know, this conversation isn't, isn't intended to be an attack on staff or any criticism of that, but for us to really say, like, what's working for us around these metrics and, and how do we, we improve that?
Yeah, I mean, I just really struggle with, because usually my Mondays at work are super busy. And for some reason, Tuesday, Tuesdays are really bad as well. If we had our board meetings on Wednesday, it'd be much better. So, like, when I don't get things till Monday or Tuesday, it's hard for me to not think, like, this is intentional. Or, like, don't they understand, like, I'm in the midst of, like, back-to-back meetings all day? And so it's hard, and I know that's not how it things, but that's how it, like, lands. It's like, you know, if I had this Thursday, I would have, like, totally tried to respect, go through it Thursday night, send off questions Friday, so that people aren't working over the weekends versus, like, everybody having a mad scramble on Monday and Tuesday.
So, I, I think, you know, the right-hand column says seven days ahead of the board meeting. I think this, this is a really good discussion for, maybe it's board leadership or this subcommittee task force to sit down with staff and say, and, and to brainstorm ideas for, how do we go from, you know, and some of it is things are totally crazy right now. And, and that's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, over the longer term, how do we get closer to seven? What, what are the steps we need to take?
I, I think one of the things that will help a lot will be having that monitoring calendar. Because I, I know when I've been involved with agenda setting, it, it's been pretty ad hoc. And, and very often, staff are finding out only, you know, two, maybe three weeks ahead of time that they're going to be up for some major presentation, which means that everybody's doing everything at the last minute, you know, while trying to deal with everything that comes in over the transom. So I, I think, I, I'm hoping that having a calendar will allow staff to kind of plan out their time more, more deliberately and people will have a heads-up. They'll know a month in advance or two months or however long. So I'm hoping that will work. But I also think that we, we need to have a discussion as a board about what we mean by transparency. Like, what qualifies as transparency? What needs to be, what needs to have a fulsome discussion in the midst of a board meeting? As opposed to something that's available online or in a memo format or something like that? Because I, yeah, because I, I'm not sure we're on the same page on that one.
So, Michelle, I'd really, Michelle, I'd be really interested in hearing your thought on this one, because I think you were touching on this when you talked about some of the barriers for folks to be board members. And, and this one talks about some of those, that communication and collaboration. So just, I wanted to hear your thoughts about this area, if you wouldn't mind.
You're muted.
Thank you, Scott. I, I said, I'm trying to get back to the scoring tool. Yeah, zero, a zero, so in other words, not student-focused. And let me see if I can scroll to the grading matrix. Let's see. I think I already said it, so the board, we're talking about communication and collaboration piece. The board did not receive the final version of materials was one thing that stuck out to me. There was a meeting that the board lasted, this has more than eight hours, but I, I feel like the one that we, when we did the board leadership change in July, qualified as a meeting that just went on way too long. And, and those are the reasons, those are the reasons I rated in that a zero. You, you talked about what I'd said earlier around diversifying the board. I mean, we're a board of, of people that are making decisions on, on the kids in our district that are, are being failed. And, and one of the theories of action I have about that is that we, that we, and, and as the largest school district in the state, my hope would be that we would eventually become more diverse and more representative of the kids that we're serving. And I, I come up against, I mean, I, I'm aware of barriers to this type of service for, for people of color. And I, I don't necessarily that, think that the communication, collaboration piece falls, falls into that. So I'm not sure what you were referencing, Elie, when you said, to talk about that again. Again, the, the reasons I voted as a zero were because of the length of some of our meetings and that we did not receive final version of materials until sometimes the day of.
I, I was thinking about what you'd said earlier about the length, length of the meetings. And, and when we were in one of the other pieces, you had just talked about, like, people having the time. And so it's, it's, it's about, like what Julia said, if you get materials on Mondays, but you're working full-time Monday, Tuesday, you know, I would assume that that's a barrier. And if, you know, meetings run really late and, you know, you have to get up for work the next morning, I think that's a barrier for a lot of us. So, that's what I, I just, I had made some assumptions that there might be some, some barriers here for folks. And so just wanted to check in with you about that.
Yeah, I mean, time commitment is definitely one, especially if we know that the people of color in our city largely are different income levels. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I, I, I'm thinking continually about ways in which we can be more welcoming. So it's one thing to say, you know, we should focus our equity. It's another thing for us to, like, model those values. And that, that would include all of us, like, you know, understanding the seats that we're in and, and in questioning, like, are we the right people at the right time to be in those seats? So...
Is there anything else on this one?
Just a couple of quick things. I thought the policy discussion in column three was really, really interesting. And, you know, it says, "The board limits its adoption of board policies regarding district operations to matters that are either required by law or appropriate exercise of the board's oversight as defined by the board's adopted goals or guardrails. Every other policy is stricken as a board policy and maybe retained as administrative policy or directive." I, I think that warrants some conversation, and it doesn't, not a quick, but over time, in terms of, I think we have a lot of policies that don't adhere to that. And, and I think it'd be a good philosophical conversation as a board to sort of talk about why. And should they be board policies or should they be administrative directives? And I think sometimes there's a real desire to make it a board policy, because then, as board members, we can say we adopted it and we get credit for that. And maybe it gets us re-elected or maybe it gets us defeated in the next election, you know? But there's a political benefit or cost. But, but I'm not sure, I, I, I just, I find it really interesting that they're pretty strong on this, right? That if it, if it, it doesn't have to do with the, the student goals or you're required by law to do it, don't, don't do it. And let us adopt administrative directives. So that was one thing I thought was interesting, worthy for the discussion. And then, I kind of disagreed that the last column, you know, fully achieving it, that you'd be limited to two meetings per month, and that includes committee meetings. I don't know if everyone saw that in the definition, but when they say board authorized meetings, they mean committee meetings as well. That doesn't seem okay to me. But I do think limiting us to two board meetings a month, you know, is, is appropriate. I don't think we should go beyond that. But, but I do think the, I mean, I, I wrote down, including committees is kind of ridiculous. Because I think there's a lot of good work that, that gets done there. And then, two more, these are just my own sort of observations. One is, is just as we talk about time management and what we spend our time on, thinking about whether we can move through items more quickly. And I think some of that is just speaking and thinking more quickly. And I don't, I, I really hesitate to say that, because I don't want to short-circuit any of the conversations. And, and I don't want to impose my own, you know, sort of, sort of values or biases or, or, you know, white-dominated culture perspectives onto the board. So I want to say this with, with all that context and, and totally open to pushback. But, but there are times we discuss agenda items where board members literally sort of start by saying, "Well, you know, I have some thoughts on this." That kind of goes on for like two minutes, or three minutes, before we actually start hearing what those thoughts are. And I'm And I'm not, I'm not trying to be funny about it, but I more think of when that's repeated five or six times, you know, for a particular item. I mean, that can burn 20, 30 minutes. And it's not so much about my time or the board's time, it is, I think about the public's time. One of the comments before I got on the board, I heard, real frustration was people were like, well, here they're going to talk about that. Well, when, well, who knows? Cause it could be anytime between 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM. And there was a frustration there. So I think there's a, there's a public accountability aspect around, around keeping a short enough agenda and keeping to our times where, you know, the public actually knows, oh, okay, I want to hear that item. So if I tune in at 7:15, I'm going to hear that item and I don't have to give up my entire evening waiting for it. Like we're going to get through it. So that's just something to think about. And then the very last thing, getting back to Rita's comment about what, what deserves transparency. And I think there's some, I think there's some disagreement on the board with me on this. But I don't think we should be reviewing anywhere near the contracts that we are reviewing. I think the Secretary of State was flat out wrong. I think it's bad governance when you put contracts into the hands of elected officials. Because elected officials don't add value to that conversation. We add politics to that conversation. And so having been on the other side of it, almost every time that elected officials get involved, it's because they want to make a political point, or we want to make, you know, that there's some, there's some constituent that has contacted us or a group that's contacted us or whatever. I just, I actually think it's, I think it's the opposite of good governance. So for me, I think dramatically increasing the authority of the superintendent to wish contracts, only bringing very, very large things to the district or to the, to the board would be better for us overall. I think it would be better for the district. And, and again, our, our role there is not, we have a role. The role is to set those, those policy parameters around what we expect to see. So do we expect to see contracts with performance measures in them? Let's, let's state that. And then it's a superintendent's job to do that, but it is not our job in a board meeting to talk about whether or not performance measures were included in the contract. Because that, that's, that's 100% the superintendent's job.
So I'm just going to respond for a moment.
Julia, I'm going to respond to his comment about the board time before we get to the contract piece. My favorite thing we do that I've done too, is we say, I'm going to echo what Director Brim Edward said. And then we repeat it and then Rita will say, I'm going to echo what Director Lowry and Director Brim Edward said. And so it just, we do that and I think it's hilarious, but it's maybe something we need to think about. All right, go with contracts, Julia.
Okay.
First of all, Ailey, I want to echo what you said and sorry, go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Andrew, I think you should be careful assigning motives to other people. Because that's your interpretation. So I just, there was a whole long statement about why people do things, making some assumptions. So I just want to state that I think that's a, that's a good conversation to have with somebody after the meeting. If you think that somebody is doing something for a particular reason, have a conversation about it. One of the things I would say about the meetings is I think when I look at the people on the board, I know there's a lot of wisdom and different expertise and experience. And I think we spend too much time just sitting there having presentations in which we, if we've read the materials in advance, we have them and it's good to have just the highlights of like, here's what it is. And then jump into a, into a discussion. Because I feel sometimes it's an hour and 15 minutes before there's an even board discussion. It's all, we're just sitting there being presented to. It's sort of like, I turn off my camera and I could go do something else because I read the materials. And so I think that's another thing we could look at, because sometimes it's not, it's not student focused as well. And if we're going to look at the whole meeting, I think that's one thing we should look at. Cause I, I want to hear, I want to pressure test other people's ideas. I want them to pressure test my thinking on things. I want to, you know, hear what people are hearing from their, you know, the people that they get information from. Because I think we have a richer discussion. So to me, if I were looking at the board meetings, that's what I would want to focus on.
So just really quickly, sorry, just really quickly want to jump in.
Can we, Andrew, can we hear from Michelle first and then come back to you? Cause we haven't heard from Horamas yet.
I'm responding very directly and very quickly to a comment. My, my comments about motives is based on 20 years of staffing government board officials. So I actually feel pretty confident in that observation during my career. So that's, that's where that comment's coming from.
I just want to make sure that we're not limiting how, who talks and how long we talk. Some of us talk a lot longer than others. I don't think that means you're any smarter. I think it might mean that it takes longer to get the, the thoughts out. Best practices for being welcome and inclusive are where you allow everyone that's around the table to contribute in the best way they can. And, and not to limit that input. That is, that is, that is a white supremacy, actually. It's one of the characteristics that shows up in workplaces and organizations. So, I mean, I think to the extent that we can, we should model best practices in terms of making sure everyone speaks. Make sure, making sure everyone's heard, acknowledging what people say, you know? Not trying to win any Olympics for talking longer, you know? But, and try to be, you know, we can try to be quick in our statements. But I think sometimes the best way we can show up also is by having those discussions. Because otherwise it's like Julie was saying, we might as well be out gardening or doing something else. So I hope that we wouldn't limit people's contributions.
So just, just want to say, as soon as we get the topics for the syllabus work sessions calendared out, hopefully in the next week, the stage two of that conversation is, is to work on how we structure those conversations. And well, Julie, I don't know if you, you realize you just put something right in front of your camera and it's like, oh, okay, I guess.
I'm just replugging in my other computer because they're all, the batteries are dying.
It was very sporty.
Yeah, so I, again, responding to what you brought up and Michelle brought up. How do we structure this both in a way that we all have different ways of processing? And also to, you know, to allow our discussion can help the public understand, get to a deeper point of understanding on some of the topics. And also to be very clear that when we're talking about these, we're not talking about micromanaging. We're, we're talking about understanding and communicating. But more, more on that later.
Yeah, can I, can I interrupt here? Because it's already 6:20. We have two more categories to go through and, and I want to make, no, we've got unity and trust in continuous improvement. So I want to make sure that we have time at the end to kind of do a, what do we do now? So I think what I'm hearing from this conversation is that this is, this is a category that we need to have more conversation about. I've got lots of notes about how we need to have conversations. So, so if you don't mind, can I move us along to the next category, which is unity and trust? The board will lead with one voice in its pursuit of the vision and goal. So on this one, yeah, people want to talk about why they scored the way they did in this one?
Can you just say what they are Rita, so we don't have to toggle back to them?
Okay, so Michelle, Ailey, Scott, Andrew and I scored a zero. Amy and Julia scored an approaching, approaching student outcomes book.
So for one thing, I haven't memorized where we are in terms of achieving our goals. That, that was in column four.
Well, you should. That's your homework for tonight.
A little more seriously is that we've talked off and on and probably have a list somewhere of board operating agreements and protocols. But we really, we really don't have them.
I just sent that around this week to everybody, but it hasn't been formally adopted. And I think we all agree that it needs some tweaking and it's something we should spend some time on.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of a first order of business, I think for us going forward from here is to nail those down. And on something of a regular basis, mention them at board meetings.
And Scott, the corollary to that that's mentioned here is that we do not have an ethics and conflict of interest statement. This is the only board I've ever served on where I didn't have a formal conflict of interest statement. Which is kind of interesting, given the, the value and seriousness of so many of the things we deal with.
Well, actually as public officials, I mean, one thing I think that's different from, so I sign a lot of those serving on boards. And I think one thing that's different, why, why I was assumed that we hadn't signed one is like, there, there is a set of ethics rules that do apply to elected officials. So that's sort of the overarching. Could we also adopt one specific to PPS? I think that yes, that's the case. But we do have a framework that we all need to operate it under as elected officials. And, you know, through the, it's enforced by and monitored by the government standards and Ethics Commission.
It's pretty, pretty broad.
I think it would be good practice based on, I mean, the risk of not having one probably in place is, is, is pretty great.
Yeah, most.
Committee, is that something the policy committee would come up with? Or could we just adopt, I bet OSBA probably has a conflict of interest or some language already established that we could look at and tweak.
There's, there's a lot of prototypes for ethics statements from, most, most big school districts have ethics statements. And the, and the state, the one that governs all elected officials really only pertains to financial conflict of interest, doesn't address anything else.
I also gave this a zero because we weren't, didn't have, we don't have that ethics statement that we sign. And then we also, the thing about the staff, where it says all board members agree that if the board has committees, their role is only to advise the board, not to advise the staff. And sometimes I feel like being on the policy committee, that was, it was kind of circular sometimes. As if some of those boundaries aren't as clear to me. Maybe they're clear to other board members, but, but it feels like sometimes there's some shadowiness there.
Sorry, which, which number are you looking at, Ailey?
I'm looking at the bottom of the second column on the unity and trust one. That says, all board members agree that if the board has committees, their role is only to advise the board, not to advise the staff.
So I, I think on the policy committee and really sometimes other committees as well, is that's where I, I'm willing to argue for a little flexibility around that. If, for example, in the policy committee, if we're doing public process as we should on rewriting a policy, the staff needs to be kind of guided by us. I think that's, that's kind of the one exception to, hey, the superintendent is the only one we work with. And maybe, maybe, maybe I'm wrong in this, but that's my inclination is if we're, if we're not overseeing that public engagement process, then we can, you know, we can go sideways on it. And that's not, not a happy place to be. So I just want to say that's something to talk about, not, not here, but as in the future.
So I, I think, I think the, where the line is between board interactions with staff and versus board, I don't want to use micromanaging, but that's the only word I can think of, staff. I, I think it's, I don't think we have a common understanding of where that line is. And there may actually not be one line. There may be different lines depending on the circumstance. I mean, I can see there is a difference between committee work and, you know, like full board work. Kind of of necessity, a committee is intended to be deeper in weeds. I think that's, I don't know how else to do it and bother having a committee. So, so there may be, I don't know, I, I think it, I think there's room for discussion about how the board is interacting with staff at various levels.
Is there an Oxford comma in it, comma in there? I said, was there an Oxford comma in there?
I know, I think it was just a run on sentence, just plain old rhyme.
I think Rita, one of the words you were looking for too is directing staff.
Well, they, the language says, includes advising staff.
I actually noted that, that it's, you know, because I thought that was an important inclusion is that, is that, you know, we've, you know, to get to column three, we've, we've adopted a statement requiring that board members do not give operational advice or instructions to staff members. I think, I think we need to talk about that as if that's a value we want to, you know, adopt and adhere to.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, when we were putting together the bond package. And if we said to staff, can you give us an estimate on X? That's, that's kind of giving direction to staff in a sense. And I don't see any way around that. So anyway, I'll, I'll back off of that and just say that's a fruitful topic. And what else do we need to talk about here in this?
Yeah.
And I think that's, I was just going to say, sorry, Michelle, were you going to speak?
I was just thinking about the audit committee and how, how that functions. And, you know, the auditor's the, the expert, but she's one of the staff that's supervised, you know, by the board. So I was just wondering how that would impact our, our work. I mean, that we, it says, you know, the board members don't give operational advice. We, we don't necessarily, but it's sort of a, like many working relationship, it's, it's give and take. I don't think it applies to the audit committee, I guess is what I'm saying.
I see though, that's different because those are our staff directly. Those are directly, direct reports to us as opposed to everybody else reporting to the superintendent.
I think this would be a great topic to have with staff. Because a lot of times they do ask, I mean, I think when there's politically hot issues, you know, we all get the call around like, hey, are you okay with this? It's like, oh, you're asking like what, like directionally is okay or one more executive session? So I think there is sometimes places where like, you know, staff or the superintendent aren't going to want to, that they are going to want the elected members of the board to, you know, set, set a direction if it's a political issue. So I think that's, it's a good discussion to have, like what sort of parameters would, would staff put on it? Like here, here's when we could use your, your help or advice. And here's when, like it's, you know, we don't need it. And have, have that be a better, so you have a better definition of like, I'm confused, you're asking, you know, you're calling, like, are we vote? Sometimes like I get a call and they're saying like, here's what we're going to do, what do you think? And I'm like, are we voting on it? Cause like, I didn't see that on an agenda. It's like, no, we're just trying to get a sense of like where the board is. And it's like, okay, well, here's my point of view. But we won't vote on it. So I, I think to avoid misunderstandings of where, what, what, what issues that apply to and where is it helpful? Or where is it solicited to have a conversation with staff?
Okay, so I've got in my notes, this is another area where we need to have further discussion. And we're not going to, we're not going to resolve it tonight. So, okay. I'm feeling a little anxious about the time. So the last category is continuous improvement. The board will invest time and resources toward. The board will invest time and resources toward improving its focus on the vision and goal.
Can you just re-go over our scores?
So six of us were in zero, and Ailey was in approaching. So you want to defend your position, Ailey, or?
I am the crack-eyed optimist. I mean, I think, I, I, I felt like we were further than, maybe I should have used a minus. Again, I didn't think outside the box, as Michelle has pointed out. I didn't feel like we were as low as a zero, and I felt like we were moving towards one. So that's why I put us in the one, that we are beginning these things of, of, of trying to improve, like, tonight, doing the self-evaluation is part of that. We have been in, in government team trainings. We are recognizing accomplishments. We are doing a self-evaluation. So all of those pieces, I think, were why I didn't ran it, rate us as a zero. So again, I'm, I'm more generous of a greater than some of you, and I, all the staff will go with that.
Can I ask a question? The rubric referred to a governance-focused retreat or meeting or training or what, that was board co-led, or had students co-leading, or? Help, help me out here. What, what exactly do they have in mind?
Don't you think it would be a? Go ahead.
No, it's just, the short answer is, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I, I've got what you've got, so, worth the conversation, I think.
I was gonna venture a guess, which is, if you, if you actually did, were over in the green column, it would be radically different than what any other school board in Oregon is doing, and that there'd be value in walking the community members through why the board meetings look differently, because we're using a student outcomes-focused governance system. And that's why it's not like what you're used to seeing. That's just my guess. And that the more the community buys into it, you get a much more sustainable culture of student-focused versus, "Hey, why didn't you have this on your agenda?", or, "Why didn't you recognize, you know, this group?", or, you know, what, whatever it is.
I like, I like, I, I can subscribe to each of those items in the mastering column there.
I, um, I really liked the, in the second column, the board tracks the average annual cost of staff time invested in governance during its annual self-evaluation, including time of staff members invested in preparing for attending and debriefing after meetings. That's difficult, so sometimes the data, the gathering of the data actually costs more than it's worth to actually have the data. But kind of having that focus, I, I think we would be shocked. I would think we would be truly shocked at the cost staffing our meetings, because it's not just our board staff, it's, it's everyone and every hour they've spent throughout the year preparing for it. And again, I don't know, I'm not necessarily advocating to do it, because, you know, again, sometimes that, actually gathering the data is, is more trouble than it's worth, but being cognizant of that, you know, how many hours went into this week's staff meeting? Was it 20? Was it 100? You know, and, 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 you know, multiply that out by an average cost, I mean, that's, that's quite a few teachers that we could be funding, you know, in our classrooms, right? If we, if we weren't spending that time, you know, on that. And so finding that balance, right? What, what's the, are we, years ago, my, one of my, my deputy budget director put together the daily cost of the city budget office. This is not a big office, it was 17 of us. And, you know, I, I want to say it was something like $32,000, $33,000 a day, which is kind of a shocking number, right? When you think, but, you know, 17 people over the course of a year, all the materials and services and everything. But he did it in advance of a retreat, so that we started talking as a staff about, have we added $33,000 worth of value today, right? As an office, did we provide that value to the taxpayer? I think as a board, asking that question, have we provided what, whatever that cost is, right? Did this board meeting, did it justify $15,000 of staff time, right? You know, being spent to prepare and staff for it? Because it, it needs to, right? And if we're not, we need to really rethink, you know, sort of, sort of what we're doing. So anyway, that jumped out at me, I like.
And also, around that point that you mentioned, Andrew, about, you know, not just talking for talking sake, but to actually be, you know, a little bit more disciplined in our, in our use of time in meetings.
Yes.
Yeah. I hate it when staff feel like they have to hang around just in case.
Yeah.
And then it's, and then it's 10 o'clock, and they have to get up in the morning and do it all over again. I, in the past, I've had the feeling that staff wants to make a presentation to us on X, and they're kind of guessing what we want to hear. And sometimes it hits the mark, it hit the mark, and sometimes it didn't. And I'm hoping that we can do some better communication upfront, so that when they do spend time to put something together for us, it's high-value and, and meets our needs. And I think what we perceive the public needs are as well, for communicating on a topic.
Because I know, like, you know, I know people are frustrated that we got our re-entry presentation late, but I know that multiple of our senior staff were working on that over the weekend. So how many staff hours to get that presentation out? And, you know, is that, again, it's that balance of, of staff time and staff resources and what we need to be effective, but also, I think some people used the word discipline, I think it was Amy, how can we be disciplined at the board to, to, to know where those boundaries are? I mean, I always want more information, I always want it earlier, but recognizing that, that that's sometimes not possible, and maybe it's not the best way to step down, is hard. But I think that's a further conversation for us to have, as we look at resources in this area.
So one thing that I want to make a positive, can I make a positive comment?
Sure.
This is, back to Scott's earlier question about what would you like to move to, to move to in the next column. On this particular one, in the second column, I really liked the one, "The board has provided time during regularly scheduled board-authorized public meetings to recognize the accomplishments of students and staff regarding progress toward goals and interim goals." And I think, to me, we have lots of examples of success. And recognizing that is, I think, in a really important way in which we acknowledge and reaffirm in a positive way that we're focused on student, student outcomes. I think it's also motivational for us to be disciplined when we see, like, the success, okay, like, we want more of that. Anyway, I'd love if we could accomplish that in the next, that next column.
Okay, I'm gonna, it's now 6:41. Can we power through till, for another 19 minutes?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I thi-, I think a best practice is a summarization.
Yeah, so I have that, I'm gonna make a note.
So I was gonna, I, I wanted to leave the next 20 minutes to talk about, okay, well, now what?
Okay.
Like, what have we heard, what do you want to do next? You know, now what?
Right. And, and mine, I've been taking notes while we've all been talking, and I've also made, like, a parking lot of next steps, just hearing what people have said. So what I'd like to do, just, just because we have less time than we, we thought we might have at this section, is to read what I already have. And then if there's additional things to add into that, is that cool?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
I've also been keeping a list, so, awesome.
You can add, add to this.
And I think, I think Rita has as well, so.
Okay, so the list I have is, we need to look at refining the goals, especially as it relates to high school and middle school. We need to formalize some of the guardrails that we already have. One thing that I added, that I noticed to help us move to the next column on those, first area, was to add quarterly reports on the goals, and we do have those in the calendar. We need to look at a monitoring calendar. We need to have a further conversation with the board about the consent agenda. I made a note for me to connect with Liz around the conflict of interest statement and ethic statements, based on the examples in the columns, and, and using some of her advice about all the resources that are out there, like Michelle said, from OSBA. And then that we, as a board, need to have a further conversation about direction and advising of staff. What else? Scott and Rita, what do you have from your list?
Monitoring our time and talking with staff about, would it be more efficient to, for example, to have another board staff person to free up time for senior staff around preparing for board meetings? But that, that whole interaction, how to make that more efficient and effective.
Hey, Ailey, I think on that piece around directing staff, I think a nuance there is that there's a fine line between an information request and directing of staff. And so we need to get tighter on, you know, making sure that information that's requested, if it's owners to provide, that it's truly information that the whole board needs, because that verges into directing and eating up significant staff time fairly easily. I think we're a lot better than we used to in some ways, but I think it's still an issue.
Yeah. And I, I like, Andrew, at least a year ago, brought up the metro practice around information requests and how long they take. If it's a big info request, then the full board really needs to say, yeah, this is important to all of us. Whether we end up adopting that, I think that's, that's a, a good idea to look at.
I mean, that's sort of been our guardrail, but I don't think we, I don't think we're very clear on it, and I don't think it's adhered to very consistently.
Other things I had on my list were, how do we get to a seven-day lead time? Policy simplification. You know, we had talked about that last year, about just looking at, God, that whole history, that's, it's like an overgrown garden. Let's add another policy here. Nobody's done the big meta step back and look at it. We were gonna have OSBA do that, and I'm, I'm not quite sure what happened with that, but.
In process.
Okay, yeah.
Now that you're on the policy committee, you'll know in great detail.
Yeah. Court, I think, board quarterly self-evaluation is an easy, easy thing to add to our calendar.
And whoever vice chair will, will lead that effort?
Yeah, happy to.
I didn't make a name very loudly, I was just curious.
I, I think we're gonna let Rita run with the self-evaluation piece as part of her board development, uh, role there, because Scott has about 87 other things that he's doing right now.
That's awesome.
And he's still working.
Yeah, did we have consent agenda down on the list? As, as a discussion item?
Yeah, Ailey said that, Rita.
Yeah, okay. And then that last thing that I said about the board-led slash student-led governance focus, whatever that is, finding it, figuring out what, what they actually meant by that, what that, an example, what that might look like. And then we can decide whether that's something we want to engage in or not, as, as a best practice. That's something, again, to go back to the council on.
Can I add a couple things?
And Julie's suggestion around recognizing where we're hitting the mark, students and Best practices kind of successes. This is awesome work. I mean, I think, I think we've been really productive in this.
Can, can I add, can I add just a couple things that, that I could? So I, I did them by category as we went through, and under the monitoring and accountability, there was some discussion about, we need, we need a conversation about what we think a monitoring and accountability function would look like. Under communication and collaboration, a conversation about what, what things need to be discussed, what, what things need public transparency in the form of a board agenda item or discussion? What needs, what needs a board policy? How many meetings per month of all kinds are we willing to have? Under continuous improvement, ask the council what it would look like to include students and community in, in, the, what, the, in the, having student outcomes-focused governance? What, what would that look like? And getting some accounting, some even rough accounting of staff time spent in responding to board stuff. Okay, so, so that's a very long list of things. And, and they're kind of all over the place. So in the next, what, nine minutes, 10 minutes? Can I ask a couple of concrete questions, just to sort of start off on the, okay, well, now what? So let me ask you first.
I would actually like to ask if there were any things that you, I, or Scott missed that people felt were important things to add to that list? Is that okay?
Have we, we collectively agreed that we're going to adopt this tool and monitor regularly with fidelity to the, the way that they have laid out the goals?
No, we have not. And that was, that was my next question. So was this exercise helpful?
I think so.
Yes? Okay. Was this tool helpful?
I can answer that for, I mean, I don't know what tools are out there, but I trust that you did a really thorough job. I think it's enough.
I think it works especially, you know, I think it's a good starting point, and it'll be more helpful when we know what we're aspiring to and we organize ourselves accordingly.
And can, can I just say, I, I don't think it's problematic in any way that we scored ourselves the way we did, because this is, you know, we've been acknowledging for at least two years that we're trying to pivot. So we're, we're trying to do things differently, and whenever you're trying to change things up, it, there's, there's a pretty significant lead time that you need. We've never used this tool before. We have, we haven't been as, like, diligent and consistent in engaging in, you know, any kind of training in the council model. So I think we're fine. And the other thing I would say is, a friend of mine who does system improvement in healthcare, he was advising a, a doctor's group someplace, Alaska, you know, middle of nowhere, Alaska, and they did a self-assessment and their numbers were terrible. And they were all bent out of shape, and he said, "Here's the thing. If you have a baseline that's really low, it's really easy to show really quick and significant improvement." So, so there you go. Okay, so if, if we think that this tool is going to be helpful, I think the next question is, do we want to continue to try to do this just using our own resources? Or do you think it would be helpful to have consultation with a council facilitator who has been trained in the instrument to help us, help us work through? to help us, help us work through the process?
How much is that?
Do you think that would be helpful? Okay, depend, so there were three trained facilitators. AJ is one of them. And then there are two other people who, one is in Idaho and I can't remember where the other one is. So those are the only three trained facilitators. AJ would be free as part of our council dues. The other two, we would have to, we have to do a contract with. And and I didn't, I didn't want to pursue it until we had talked about whether we even want to go there. But so just an in principle question. Do you think it would be helpful to have somebody actually trained in using this tool for system improvement?
I would find it helpful. And I also like free value considering, you know, our budget constraints, not just now, but into the next year. And and AJ, if he's trained in the tool would be would be great. Price is right.
Prices, yeah. Brings a very good price. But the others may be very reasonable. So, you know, I I would suggest that we leave it open. But I mean, the general question is, do you think it would be helpful to have a trained facilitator rather than somebody like me where I'm just making it up?
I think it would be helpful.
I think it would be helpful, but that's no disrespect to you, Rita. I mean, I just, I'd also would allow you, you probably did more freely engage in the conference, in the discussion.
And I'm not taking any of this personally. I'm I'm well aware of my limitations and I frequently hit them. Okay.
Well, Rita, thank you for doing all this because this is a lot of work and a lot of digging and a lot of like assessing and tabulating. So I appreciate the time you put in. And who did the PhD to help walk us? I mean, it does.
Three letters should be good for something, right?
My PhD comes in hand like three times a year, if that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Starting to get deep here.
So, yeah, exactly. So so I will explore the facilitator angle. I think the the next, the next question, I think, is based on kind of the overall discussion tonight. Are there any? And we went through this very long list at the end about the things we could focus on in the short term. Of that long list, are there any categories or specific actions that you would like to, like us as a group to focus on in the short term? Like over the, over the next quarter?
So Rita, I'm seeing that it's we have four minutes left and I know several of us have hard stops. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to email out to the group the list that I kind of cobbled together just now and have people maybe respond to me, so it's not like a quorum, with just one or two things that you'd like to prioritize. And I think some of the things on there, y'all have given me some marching orders about how you'd like meetings to look and some things I can do as board chair to kind of get running on some of those. And Scott can do as vice chair and Rita can do with the development piece. So does that feel like that would be a better honoring of time and give us all a chance to really think about what what we want to prioritize?
Sure.
So I think as to take that, I think that's great, Ailey. And there's some of some pieces on there that are pretty cut and dried. They're kind of low hanging fruit, you know, get an ethic statement, conflict of interest. That's not a lot of, that's not messy work. That's just getting something. And we could sort of have a checklist through the year that we move through those like one at a time. And then there are other things that are that are messy. And I think that's where a facilitator might really help us out.
Yeah.
And I don't mean messy, I mean complex. Messy in a, in the best possible way.
So thumbs up if you'd like to have a facilitator lead us through the next iteration of this.
Okay. Okay, and in the in the last three minutes, I'm going to ask a question and ask for you to get back to, I don't know, me, Ailey, somebody. With I do it, okay, we'll send it to Ailey. She'll be the, she'll be the point person on this. So there are a lot of different directions we can take around board development. One of them is doing a self evaluation and doing it kind of with fidelity on a regular basis. But there are lots of other things we could do as well. And if anybody has any ideas about what you would like, please let me know. Can I throw out one idea that I had and see if there's any, any interest? I think it would be very helpful for us to have sort of peer to peer contact with other school board members. I've talked to the council and they're sort of intrigued at the idea. There's, there's been a little bit of it recently around the COVID stuff. But I think it would be really interesting and and helpful to have contact with a school board that either has has already gone through the kind of system wide transformation that we're talking about and come out on the other side or is currently going through something of similar scope? So that we could sort of compare notes and like, you know, am I crazy? But I think that, is there any interest in in trying to set something like that up?
Are you talking about member to member?
Yeah.
It would be either individual member.
I'm going to call us at time. Wait, it's like 6:59, so I will send that email out and y'all can respond to me via email about whether or not that's something you'd be interested in. So it is seven.
Facilitate that and explore that if people want to try to match up. I think it'd be interesting to match up by committee or job alike. Thank you.
I just want to say appreciation to you all for giving your time tonight to this. I think it's really important. I think everyone showed up really authentically in really great ways. Thank you all for your hard work and especially thanks to Rita for, she looked through tons of self evaluations, did tons of work around it, trying to find the best jumping off point. And I want to be clear, any of the scores we gave are not an indictment of anything in the district, but really just for us to start to think about, where do we go next? I think we can all recognize how far we've come. We have an incredible staff, you know, we worked really hard as a board together for this past year. And I know that we are all interested in how we can continue to be better. All right, 7 o'clock, everybody have a great night and we'll see you September 8th, if not before, in other ways.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.